Oh goodness.
I do. Claire. Don't start.
What's the what?
I mean, I've never listened to it. I have not listened to recordings, so I'm not sure how well I wish.
Well, they were looking at putting some other drop mics in and just get. It's no good. It should be nice to just have the mics so you didn't have to worry about it. So wherever you were like downstairs.
And I haven't.
Pretty good.
I haven't watched the recording.
Milton.
Morning Milton.
What are you doing sneaking around?
He looked more like he was lumbering more so than. Yeah. Well, you know what they say about payback? So we don't have Steve today, so you're gonna be handling all the.
Yeah. There's not that many.
Pardon?
He's in Boise.
He's got, he's down campaigning for the next couple of days. He had a radio interview or something and then debate or a forum or. Yes, ready? Okay, it's nine o'clock. It's time on our schedule for our weekly business meeting. If you all stand with me, Pastor Jerry, a favor, we'll open this up here. I'm assuming that's why you're here, Jerry.
We're taking for this time that here it's just thank you for speaking with the meeting there decently in an order and that you just be wisdom for our listeners. Thank you for the service and for the community. Thank you to recognize the birth of Jesus and Christmas season that is our focus. Thank you for coming to be born and God sending your son to die for us that we can have the goodness to sin.
May you follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, alright. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of the agenda as presented.
And I will step down from the chair in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, should be noted that Commissioner Conley, Commissioner McDonald are here today. For the record, Mr. Bradshaw is excused. Um, now we go into public comment. Um, we've got a couple of people signed up. Kendra. You got three minutes.
Um, good morning. Okay, so, um, last week, two things I have. Last week, we talked about the, um, is it called Eagle Eye program?
Eagle View.
Eagle View, thank you, program. And so I just wanted to clarify, um, that how that data is made available to the public.
I don't know that I can tell you that.
Yeah, I know it's working out. You'd have to talk to GIS.
So we have a map viewer, but, um, I don't think that the public has access to Eagle View at this point.
Not to Eagle View itself, only because of contractual agreements.
Okay.
I do know that, but it is available when you go on the GIS mapping system that we make available to the public.
Right.
That's where you're seeing the results of the data.
That's the map you see where you pull up the county map. That's a target. That's where that department.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that the public still had the transparency to be able to get in and see it. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to find out is, um, um, I wasn't here for it, but I understand that there was a contract made with Zipley for broadband. What money was used for that?
That was money from the state through the CARES Act.
The CARE, the seven billion from CARES Act?
Yeah, whatever it was.
Okay, cuz I know that ARPA came out a CARES Act and I just wanted to make sure that.
CARES Act was under Trump.
Correct, I know that. Okay, so.
This was leftover money that didn't get spent in the first round. So the, uh, the governors, the com, Department of Commerce put it out there and, uh, made it available.
Okay, so was it tied to when we did our budget and we were talking about we didn't have a broadband project, so therefore we couldn't get the money that, that you guys wanted, so you didn't have to take foregone. You guys were talking about a government money you couldn't touch because you didn't have broadband or sewer projects and so therefore you had to take this.
ARPA's limitations were broadband sewer, uh, well, they were broadband sewer, water systems and, uh, anything COVID related, any expenses.
Okay, so this has no connection to ARPA whatsoever?
No, this is all old CARES Act money lifted up from the state, which is states.
Great.
The states, the state had, so.
Super. Just wanted to clarify that and Kendra Martin for the record. Thank you.
Uh, Todd.
Hey, Commissioners, uh, thank you for letting, letting me speak this afternoon and this morning. Um, I'd like for you guys to be able to, um, clearly state what the strings are that is going to be attached to the ARPA funds.
We don't actually know yet.
Okay.
Our attorneys are looking into it. Uh, we've had several different groups look into it. We've got an outside group that we hired as well that's a national, international firm to help us navigate it. The problem is that even with the most recent, um, infrastructure bill out of Congress, my understanding is that there's gonna be some additional changes.
Okay.
That's why we're kind of holding off.
And you're gonna hold the money until we find out what the stipulations are?
More money than we've already allocated, so.
Okay, the money that you have allocated has that, was that attached to ARPA?
That is.
It is. So we are already bound by the stipulations from DC.
Well, so here's the deal. Let me, let me explain to you. And I know you have been here for the last several meetings. We've discussed it. So what we've done is we, we originally allocated money before we came to the realization of this, these new terms or these terms and conditions. And, um, so what we did is we decided, you know, other than the money we've already, we've already, um, allocated and moved into EMS budget, we weren't gonna spend any more money until we got a ruling. Now, we're doing that under the guise of knowing that EMS already has, uh, reserves.
Okay.
Could actually pull in if we need to, to pay it off and send the feds packing if that should, should happen, but, but that's, yeah, we're not going any higher than that, so.
Okay, so we can get that money back from EMS and send it back to the feds once we find out what's attached to ARPA?
Yep.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
So we're being real prudent about that cuz we don't know. I mean, we, we rely on our attorneys.
Yeah, I, uh, we just find it concerning that there's going to be stipulations and, and, uh, chains and, and handcuffs.
Uh, there is with every, with every federal dollar, which is really taxpayer dollars, so. Well, in this case, it's kind of not taxpayer dollars. They just printed this one, yeah.
They just printed it up, yeah.
But the taxpayers still are on the hook for it, so.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that, uh, we all know in our community what we're going to be bound to by the federal government if we spend this money.
And we've been pretty, pretty, uh, not pretty, we've been very virulent about the fact that if Biden were to ride in here on a horse and say, hey, now that you guys are taking some money, you're gonna do this, this and this, we would absolutely resist.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Relative to that.
Doc Patterson, for the record, relative to that, we can't know what the restrictions are because one of them is that we will follow all presidential, um,
executive.
Executive orders.
Yeah, I would, I read recently.
Including future ones.
Yeah, and I've read recently where the, the stipulation on that is, has some legal issues with it to begin with, uh, so.
I would, I would hope.
So that's why we're kind of waiting for attorneys to sort it out.
And I think that I, and I've said it before and I'll say it again. I think that as this becomes challenged, um, quite frequently in the courts, then we'll have a better definition of how it's gonna work. I'm pretty sure that there's gonna be some rulings that will give us guidance on what we can and can't do.
Yeah, even so much with the vaccine mandate. Now it's been, it's been held up in what, three different federal courts because of being unconstitutional, which a lot of us knew if you did any research on it, you can see historically, there've been two previous rulings where they said, yeah, this is the governor's responsible job, not, not the president's job, so.
Um, is there a schedule yet for the, for the discussion and potential, um, on, on terms of the ice rink thing yet?
Not yet. We're hoping after the holidays. There's been, uh, a new little wrinkle thrown in by the sheriff that we're dealing with. So once we deal with that, then, then we'll schedule a date for an informational meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Asia. Make sure, make sure you identify yourself.
Asia Williams Blanchard Idaho. I have two questions. In planning and zoning, we hear often that the staff are getting no response from outside agencies and then it's being stated that the lack of response means there is no issue. Is that written down somewhere that if water doesn't respond, that the lack of response means there is no issue with development?
That's typically wasted. Either we'll get two types of responses. Either we'll get no response or we'll get a response from them saying they have no response.
But if there's no response, is it, is there something written that says that that means that there isn't an issue? Because my follow-up then is if that's not the way it works, what are we doing as a county to hold those agencies responsible to respond to these requests? Cuz we're getting a lot of requests for development and no responses from outside agencies. And as these little groups keep forming, we're trying to pressure like Panhandle Health to give responses to our staff because we get, they've done their job by asking, but if that does not, if the lack of response does not mean in writing that there's not an issue, we have to decide to do something to hold Panhandle Health accountable to responding to the request from our staff because they're getting no responses. It's a regular no response.
Right, and that's, and the problem we have is that we have no regulatory authority over any of these agencies. These are either state or pseudo-state agencies. Um, so we don't have the authority to demand anything from them. This is their area of responsibility. Um, so we can, all we can do is ask for a response.
You can, but you can also let those of us that keep coming to these meetings know that there is a problem. You don't have the authority so that we could help harass them to get the information needed.
I recommend you go to them and start saying, hey, listen, you guys need to respond.
Yep, so maybe should we stop saying that the lack of response means it's okay? Because that is a statement that keeps getting made at these meetings and it's not, that's not accurate. Then it's just that.
Know that the statement is the lack of response is okay. It just means that this is an regulatory agency that has the authority to regulate whatever it is.
The, the verbiage is specifically saying.
Not to respond, then we have nothing actionable to go on.
And that's a better way to say it than what is being communicated. What is being communicated at planning and zoning is if there was an issue, they would say there's an issue, therefore we're fine. And that's not accurate. And we as people can push forward on Panhandle Health to say, you wanna drop that forty acres into fives, we need a response on water.
See, we don't, we don't know that because, again, we don't regulate their areas. If we did, that'd be awesome. We would just handle it.
If you're gonna use Panhandle Health, they actually do respond and, and it's, it's a canned response. I understand where you're going with this, but they actually respond that they have to contact Panhandle Health about getting a permit and blah, 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 blah. I mean, it is a response. It's not no response.
It's not specific to Panhandle Health. In general, staffing doesn't get answers back from outside agencies.
We have no control of that. All we can deal with is the facts that come before us. Um, so if they choose not to respond, then that's a, that's a passive agreement, um, in any sense of the legal imagination, so.
Then my other part is in our comp plan twelve to fifteen subsection four, it says that any other information considered by the planning director or governing body to be necessary for a complete evaluation of proposal. And it says such as information regarding utilities, traffic, services, connections, natural resources. We are regularly, as people bringing up the issue of water, but then in these zoning meetings, the response is they don't have to because that language. But this is actually a tool we could be using to slow down the development, but we're not. And last, last planning and zoning, it was an issue came up, we're breaking it down, response given, what about water? And then the feedback is always, they don't have to, but it does allow us to regulate based on what are the natural resources available in that area to justify breaking these land, these pieces of land down. And we're not utilizing one tool that we do see in the comp plan. So is there an option for, it's open to the interpretation of staff and the director. Is there reasonable for us to expect as people that commissioners would say, yeah, you're developing in an area that has shown wells that are going down to seven hundred feet. We wanna see that you've actually looked at the natural resource availability.
So I think here's where we run into some confusion. I've seen this over and over again when it comes to the difference between a zone change and an actual development. So in a zone change, all that landowner is asking for is I wanna rezone my property. They're not talking about any structures, I mean, building, development, anything. So at that point, one of the reasons you see no comment on zone changes from a lot of these cuz there's nothing to comment on. They can't assess impact if all it is is a zone change. Now, when they come back for the next phase, which is the BLP or, uh, PUD or whatever, whatever it might be, that's when you actually have a plan. You see, yeah, we're gonna put ten houses or we're gonna put five houses or two houses or whatever it is. Then they can comment on the impact cuz they have to look at, okay, what's the draw, what's the expected draw per household for water, what's the expected, expected usage, discharge for sewage, but without, with just a zone change, that's why it's pointless to argue these, this kind of information during a zone change hearing. It's important to argue it during a, or during a.
Or if you start using subsection F, which is under the zone change, then we could get. There would be if you said you wanna put five, five, five acre plots down in one area and they did a natural resource review and it said, wait, there's a problem with water. There would be something for water to comment on if we started doing that.
That's what would stop the next step. If there's a problem with water, then when they come in for a review and say, hey, we wanna build, uh, one house every five acres, that's when you'll find IDWR will step in and say, here you go.
Not just IDWR though, the planning and zoning. So you're saying that if we use subsection F at the time of zone change, it wouldn't change?
Know what they're doing.
But at the time of the zone change, that's where subsection F comes into play. So you're saying that it would not impact the decision on zone changes?
No, because there's nothing to comment on.
Because we're not doing it though.
No, but I don't, I don't think you're understanding this. Unless we have something to deal, to, that shows impact, once we have said this shows impact, then that's when the regulatory agencies really kick in. It's, that's why it's pointless to argue zone changes. You could have a zone change that goes from, um, from twenties to fives and end up not having any development cuz it gets stopped because it, the ground doesn't hurt or they don't have enough water or what have you, or the impact to the roads. That's when that kicks in. That's why it's, it's to a degree, a little bit interesting that people get jacked up for the, uh, for the zone change hearings when they really get focused on the, the, the next step. So there's several different steps to this.
So subsection F is located in the wrong part of.
It might be.
The comp plan is what you're saying?
Well, maybe Milton can help out here.
Well, there's, there's.
You identify yourself.
Yeah, Milton.
For the record, there, there's two, the two things we're talking about are agency comments and then of course, the information we receive from the applicant. So, so it's a combination of both. You know, if IDWR or even Panhandle Health would submit a comment that says that, you know, the wells in this area, you know, don't produce very well, then that would be something.
Sure.
Um, but they don't provide any comment. They don't respond, well, Panhandle Health different, but IDWR doesn't respond at all. Um, and then second, oftentimes, we will have a well report from the applicant. And so, um, you know, twenty gallons a minute's not a bad number. So, you know, based on what we know from the applicant, that's how those decisions are made. We don't have a master plant community ordinance, right? Where if you're gonna rezone a piece of property, you have to provide, you know, proof that all of the things can be addressed, right? So if we had a master plant community ordinance or something like that, that would require this type of detail in the zone change, sure, but this is what we have. Second, statute requires that those agencies that provide service to the area. So if there was a sewer district or a water district or, um, or, you know, even the roads, if they would provide comment that says this zone change is going to impact our ability to provide service to the area, that's what statute requires. And we don't get those comments either.
So one of the things that I wanna, uh, comment towards Asia's comment about slowing down the growth, that's not what we're here for. We're not here to speed it up or slow it down. We're here to deal with it the best we can as it comes through the door. This isn't about trying to stop growth, slow down growth. We have to deal with it with the rules that are in place the best we can. I understand and, and some of your questions are very good. Um, and as we work through the new comp plan, um, remand of the comp plan, hopefully we can address these things and, and, and get more pointed to where the answers are upfront. I, I, I like that stuff where, hold on a second here. I wanna see, I wanna see what you're gonna do before I say I'm all right with fives or I'm all right with tens because there's a lot of ways to, to develop a piece of property that are non-offensive compared to a square with a bunch of squares. So it matters to me, so I'm, I'm definitely looking at that.
I think the reason I say slow down is because it feels like we are greenlighting very fast without looking at the big picture of what the impact is. And that's something that you're seeing in, you know, what is the impact to the surfaces? We are quickly saying yes. That's not, everybody has a right to deal with their own land, but we have to grow responsibly. And some of this looks like it's happening fast and that's why it's in there. And maybe the question is, is that subsection in the whole area?
But see, I keep going back to the same thing. Unless we know, unless we, if we had a master plan agreement in the, in the comp plan or in our ordinances, then we would actually see what the actual impact is. So we don't see it during a zone change. When we see it as the next step. Yeah, so for subdivision, certainly. They file for subdivision, then it's.
But if it's an MLD, it falls out from underneath.
It's in this, it's in this. So if you're reading the codes and that may be something that has to get looked at as.
Sure, and we're, and we're going through the comp plan. We're going through the comp plan now.
Okay, so this has turned into a discussion.
Yeah, this is supposed to be a time for public comment. Yeah, we're not gonna take any more quick. That's not what this is about. But yeah, but unless we have.
I'm glad to be with you at any time.
Yeah, we're always happy to sit.
And have Milton sit in and we can try to work through your questions.
Yeah.
Anytime.
Doc Patterson, for the record, um, so when you take a twenty acre plot and divide it into five acre plots, that can be done under an individual chunk, could be done as an MLD. If you have eight of those, does that not constitute a, um, of the whole, you're allowing it to go through as one division into four, but there's, when the total is thirty-two, that's some subdivision. On top of that, the people that, that get this done and now have four, five acre plots, what that allows them to do is sell each of those plots off individually to, to someone else. And that someone else in turn is, the odds of them doing anything other than building a house, needing a wall and needing a septic system is, it's right there between zero and none. And, and so, um, when you prove this to these subdivisions, um, going down to the five, the, the MLDs, you are allowing a subdivision.
We fixed that several months ago.
Um.
That was, that was a loophole in the original thing passed back before Jeff and I came in. Yeah, we needed, yeah, and we're not, Doug, this is a time for public comment, not a time for question and answer. And I apologize for going through the Q and A. This needs to be done outside of this meeting.
And we can clarify all of that.
That, that, that issue with the.
It's been fixed.
Contiguous lots has been, has been fixed.
Okay, so, uh, um, yeah, well, this is question and answer.
Date of advertisement.
So, so how many times in the last four years has one of these been denied?
We're not gonna have the conversation.
I've seen the emails.
None.
But we, but we saw, we saw there was a problem with the loophole. We fixed the loophole back in, what month was that? September? I think it was. Yeah, it was September. So we, we were able to stop that. Go ahead, make sure you.
And this is unmuted question, so this is okay. Um, I'm reading that there are discussions to, for the purchase of a social media project to determine public opinion. I wonder if that, if that is true and then, uh, where the funds come from?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't agreed to do that yet. We just had an informational meeting the other day.
Okay, it's just really, really, but very fast. Is it a member of the vaccine safety net?
Well, I don't even know what that is.
Okay, so when, I'd like to, can, do you know when these discussions for the public will be around so we could ask those questions?
If we decide to go for it, all we got was an information meeting. What this software does, it just tracks trending stories and responses. And part of it is to make sure that the right information is getting put out. Cuz there's, if you go on Facebook, there's a ton of misinformation.
Oh, well, that's exactly what this is about. And just long story short, vaccine safety net comes indirectly through a London School of Hygiene, directly from the World Health Organization. So in other words, it's ARPA money.
Yeah, that's not what this is about.
Okay, still would like to be involved.
No, it's just that.
Will you let us?
Tool that we looked at that looks interesting, but we haven't, I haven't seen the price tag on it yet.
That's a public friend, so we can listen on. Okay.
Yeah, it'll be in an open public meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, the, the meeting where we had the, where they gave us their demonstration was an open public meeting also. And it was advertised.
Any other question or any other question? Any other, uh, public comment? No questions? Okay, seen none, we'll move on.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And I will step down from the chair in a second. Um, question or comment, Doug?
Um, the, the usual. Um, you've got, uh, three EMS over five K and the Roden Bridge. Could you tell me what they are?
Yeah, these are all things, this is the cleanup. We've been discussing them, the EMS thing. So I'll give you the Roden Bridge was, uh, shed repair, um, District One equipment shed repair, thirty-five thousand eight hundred EMS. And you've already heard these. These are life packs, trauma training mannequin and Sapphire multi-therapy infusion pumps. The life packs are a hundred and forty-five thousand. The, uh, trauma training is eight thousand eight hundred thirty-one and the Sapphire multi-therapy infusion pumps are eleven thousand nine twenty-four. Again, these are things we've been, you know, you know how we, we have to talk about it ten times before we finally get down to paying the bill. They were ordered and we're just paying the bill.
Just looking at how big the bill is.
Yeah, sure. Oh, yeah.
Um, Kendra Martin, regarding the EMS, um, invoices, is there a way for the public to actually see the accounting on the EMS? Cuz there's been a lot of money being assigned to EMS and.
Because I, this is something the public's not aware of, but thanks for asking. So the process is everything goes through the clerk's office first and they make sure that the money is in the budget, um, before they can, before it passes through them.
Okay.
So that's just normal business or normal everyday business. So we don't just will and they'll spend money without knowing whether or not the money actually exists to spend. Um, there's a lot of checks and balances when it comes to that, so yeah.
Good. And, and again, not all.
Anytime you can pull, you can go into the clerk's office and ask for a current, um, budget that shows available balances and they're happy to give it to you.
For any of the departments we talk about here? Super. Okay, and again, not ARPA money. Not ARPA money.
This is money for EMS. This is money that we moved in previously for ARPA, um, before we found out about the terms and conditions. But as I said earlier to Todd, is that we've got money in reserve to cover it. So push, come to shove, and the ruling does, comes back in a way that we don't like, then we'll just, that, we'll have to open the budget, bring it in, pay it off.
Okay, so that, that's concerning to me. So you're saying that he's actually, this, this third K?
Money we allocated back.
From ARPA.
Yeah, we moved into EMS's budget, ordered the equipment. The equipment's arrived. We need to pay the bill.
Okay, so I understand that we have a reserve and that reserve is supposedly got a plan for it. And that's the reserve you're talking about putting back into ARPA so that initial plan, which I think is a new headquarters, is not going to happen because it will have to be repay ARPA? Okay, um, all right. So you guys are the police force on that, that money and ha, and absolutely having the money to put back, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so and, and Jeff Williams is aware that if we have to put it away, that the headquarters are not gonna happen.
I made him absolutely aware. He's been, he's actually in.
And, yeah, he's, yeah, okay.
That was, that was a stipulation once we found out about the whole terms and conditions. Thank you. So here's the deal. We're not spending any more ARPA money. We've already allocated this up. We've already ordered the equipment. We gotta pay for it.
I'd like to see that ARPA money come back rather than spend it.
We'll see what happens. If the terms and conditions change, then I'd rather see us use taxpayer money to offset what it costs county taxpayers.
Okay, also, um, I'd like to again push for the ARPA workshop. I know that, uh, we're trying to find meetings here and there, but, uh, a lot of us have been doing our own personal research on ARPA and, um, seeing a lot of things that are very nefarious that go against the resolution that we signed previous. No, this is from the documents from the federal government, okay? Can I, can I, just let me finish.
Told you several times, once we get something from legal, then we will hold the meeting.
Okay, but I am pushing for you to hear the public first in case there's extra stuff that legal needs to hear, okay, before they render a decision. So is it possible to again push for a workshop where you can hear the public?
What I'd rather have you do is contact the attorney directly. Contact, um, Scott.
So he, I thought we had an outside attorney that was working on this.
Bowers or inside attorney?
We, oh, but.
Outside attorney.
We do, we have.
Outside attorney.
We have an outside accounting firm that's working with a number of counties on this very same issue. And we've enlisted their assistance.
And do we know who there? Can you tell us who there?
Yeah, I think of the name off the top of my head. It's Scott. Scott's working directly with him. And that would be the best route to get information because I'm not an attorney.
Well, I'm not looking for my information. We're looking to give you guys information.
Right, you need to give it to Scott. Scott's the one, Scott's the attorney working on this issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to, I have to clarify something because it, I've been struggling. Once I listen to what you're saying, it's a little different than what I've been saying all along. So what I've been saying all along is, is that we should put a hold on any ARPA spending out of that because the only money that we've put into. because the only money that we've put into the two was EMS and the sheriff. Sheriff came back, so it's kind of a, just a bookkeeping thing because they have the money in their budget regardless if it's ARPA line or not ARPA line. But just for clarification, I have always felt like we said, don't spend any more ARPA money at all. No ARPA funding from this point forward. Now, what you're saying is, is like, we had already committed to this, I get that, but we can also spend it, I know what's in their budget and we can spend it through their regular budget.
Well, we don't, we can't spend it through the regular budget, we have to bring it in from reserves.
Actually, we can spend it from their regular budget because they have enough money in their regular budget. You just have to move it line to line.
We'd still have to, we'd still have to open up the, Nancy's here, Nancy. We still have to open up the budget and move that stuff, money from reserves to cover this.
No.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
If you have the line item that was appropriated for the capital construction, for the Calvary Building, that is a sufficient amount that covers what we brought in to open up the budget for the ARPA. So right now, I think that's what Mike was mentioning, so that's, that money is there in the event that we need to use it later and we got different items from ARPA or something else, then we have another avenue.
It truly is taking one, money from one pocket and putting it in the other. It just truly doesn't have that, but it means a lot to, you know. And what I've been saying and believing is that we're not spending ARPA money. We're, we're, we put a, you know, hold on all ARPA spending, that's what we've said. And, and yeah, I think it's important to-
Right, so this is money that we, and I'll reiterate, this is money we moved in back in, what was it, August, September?
We did two, we did one in fiscal year 21 and one in fiscal year 22. So the one in fiscal year 22 was to somewhat reimburse them for expenditures that they had already done for the ARPA guidelines from March all the way up until September 30th. And then the second one was to anticipate needs for what would happen this winter and everything else.
So bottom line is, we have the money in reserve. Once we get a legal ruling, if we find out that it's not the, the way we want it to be, then we can pay it off, be done with them, and then all back.
That's a fact.
But it's, but it's prudent that we don't have any jerk reaction until we get all the facts.
Correct, from, from an accounting standpoint, whether it's in an ARPA line item or it's spread out, if in the event that we do use the money, I would prefer to keep it in that line item. It's just, it's just naming.
Right.
So it, it helps from a reporting standpoint, when we do have to comply with the regulations as far as reporting, I'm not searching through over 100 line items to try and figure out what's ARPA.
So to clarify for every, everybody that doesn't understand what Nancy's saying, is that when we move the money into EMS back whenever we did it, um, we moved it into a specific line item listed as ARPA because, because ARPA and CARES Act both have all these recorded, reporting requirements. And so to keep her from having to go through each one of the line items, and if you've ever seen any one of the department's budget, there's several line items, and picking out those things that, that money was used on, we have one single line item so we can, we can track it, which works out good in two ways. One, from the reporting aspect, but also from the repayment aspect. If we find out, if the ruling comes back from the attorney and says, yeah, no, we need to dump this, then we've got it all intact in that line item and it's easier for us just to go boom, move the money in reserves, out it goes, done.
In the event that we have to give the money back, then those, those line items will be, uh, reclassed to be appropriate.
Right, correct. Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, Todd Engel for the record. Um, so it looks to me like we have the budget, the money in the budget for EMS without any ARPA money.
Possibly, yeah.
Possibly?
We don't know, I mean, it's a guess at this point.
And we have money in reserve as well.
Okay, because obviously this is a huge concern in the community. Would it be terribly difficult to take the ARPA money out of the budget, put it back into the ARPA fund just for a show of good faith to the community?
It wouldn't be difficult. Um, the problem is, until we know definitively what, what this all means, it wouldn't be prudent to do this.
I, I disagree, I think it would be prudent because it would allay our, it would allay our concerns that, uh, you know, it would be a good show of faith for it to be moved back. And then if we find out what the stipulations are on ARPA, we can, then we can spend the whole darn thing if we want to, which I disagree with any federal money being given to this county.
That's not a conversation.
Yes, it is, so, um, just for the record, I would put forth that it should be returned back to the ARPA funds, removed from the budget, and put back just to allay all the fears that the community has.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, Mike Rosedale, Bonner County Clerk for the record. I think the, uh, what everybody's saying here between you and Nancy makes total sense. There's just one hitch here. Right now, we have noticed that there may be a catch and that's with, we found out about that executive order provision of 9A later. Since that, we found that out, we have not spending ARPA money. There may be a situation right now, since, since we are on notice now that that's there, if we spend money now, we blow our ability to rewind that and undo that contract. And so now we are in a unique spot where we might have the ability to extract ourselves where we otherwise might not be able to extract ourselves.
How would we not be able to extract ourselves if we can pay it all back?
Uh, because it could be that-
My second question is gonna be-
Because, well, let me answer your first question, let me answer your first question. Let me answer your first question. If, if we're on notice and we don't spend any more money after we're on notice, that may have some legal weight. It's the whole noticing, since we are on notice now, uh, and we spend more, we ratify that contract. If we don't spend any more now, then we have a chance of unwinding it. And I think we just wait until we get that clar- clarification. We can totally backfill with ARPA funds once we get clarification that it's good to go. But we're only talking like, it, it's not very much money right now. Let's spend it out of the regular budget until we know that we're not going to ratify that. That's, that's my contention, that's what I was stating earlier.
All right, Kendra, one more time.
Um, so you brought up something that is of great concern.
Kendra, I did.
Mike, you're awful, Todd. Right, Ken Hamer for the record. Nancy, you brought up something that's of great concern is the reporting process to ARPA. And we know that federal firms, um, they're, they're, they're watched all the way down to the last person who gets a federal dollar, okay? Audits are frightening that we don't even know what they're going to control. So they'll require reporting, you brought up the subject of reporting. Have we made a report already to ARPA of money that we've allocated?
We've made one report, we've no expense. At the time that we were required to report, we had spent enough.
And when do they have to make our next report? Okay, so I agree with Mike and I think a lot of people do, and, and Todd's comments were exactly in line with a lot of people that are concerned about this that had been doing this work. And this is the reason why we've been asking for a workshop, so we don't waste your time right now doing this. I agree that if we can please just spend money out of reserve, stop spending another penny of, of ARPA money so we don't ratify the contract by our actions since we are on notice. And to be honest with you, we've been literally on notice since Cheryl signed that document in May. You guys found out about it in October, but Cheryl signed it in May. So we've literally been attached to that clause since May because it was early in May. So we are concerned about it.
Yeah, and that's an issue we took, we're taking up with our attorney, did a review on it. Why didn't we know about this earlier?
I'm Tricia Boland for the record. I had a question, can we get another attorney's opinion instead of just Attorney Scott Bauer?
Because we've got, the prosecutor's, so in any county structure, you always rely on the prosecutor's office, it's, that's, that's the deal. So we do have other attorneys in the prosecutor's office, but Scott's way deep into this thing. So we'd have to go back to square one and it would just delay where we are already. Um, I think we're getting close. One of the things we're waiting for is to find out what the changes are at the federal level because there's, with the infrastructure bill, the smaller infrastructure bill that got passed. Supposedly, there's language in there that changes a lot of this as well.
Okay, but let's say that Scott says, hey, let's take the money. Could we, the people, request a second opinion from a different attorney, like a constitutional attorney, or? How would that be done?
And you'll find if you get to know Scott, Scott's a very much constitutional attorney.
Okay.
So.
So how would we request a second opinion if?
Just go find an attorney.
And would we have to pay for that ourselves? Okay, and then you guys would recognize it?
Sure. But there's got to be some basis for it. And like, like I said, if you know Scott, Scott's very much a constitutional attorney. Um, almost to the, almost to the paranoid fringe of being a constitutional attorney, if I, you know, if that's an accurate statement. But, but I mean, he really overboils everything, um, to eliminate any kind of risk. And that's why Scott's the perfect guy to, to do this because, I mean, he looks under every nook and cranny typically. I'm surprised that he didn't catch this on the onset.
And, and just for clarification, I guess if we had a opposing attorney that disagreed with his opinion, we would, I mean, it's still up to us to make a decision based on those two arguments. I mean, and that's what-
Yeah, the attorneys don't make the decisions, they just give us their opinion. But it's a legal opinion that becomes to, to a somewhat degree binding for us. But now we've got an official legal opinion, then we choose, do we go against the legal opinion or not? And if we go against the legal opinion, then it opens up some liability for the county taxpayers, so. We're always, we're taught early on when you, when you run for office that, listen to your attorneys, run everything through the prosecutor's office.
Even if they're wrong.
Even if they're wrong.
Well, Bonner, that's not good. I would just like to support what Mike said as well. We talked about what would be prudent, and what would be prudent is to be safe and sorry. And so if we can do this and then, you know, put back or whatever, why not do the easy thing now before it gets dicey a little bit later? Thank you.
Okay, any other question or comment? We don't keep you in there, okay? Um, I'll go and call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, moving on.
Wait, 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 well, sorry, did we just approve using the ARPA funding for EMS?
We did, but we can do, we can do bookkeeping and do it.
The conversation's been good conversation.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can make some-
So we'll have a discussion with the clerk's office, Kendra. We'll have a discussion with the clerk's office after this.
Okay.
So we get, this is just a clerical thing.
So when, next meeting?
We're, all we're, all we're doing here is approving paying the bill.
And we have to.
We've got any, we have to pay.
We've got people that are waiting for payment, so we can't hope that-
Put it in an ARPA line item or it's a bill that still has to be-
It's just clerical.
Necessarily, but ARPA is paying that particular bill.
Not necessarily, but we can use reserves first before we optimize.
We don't.
Is the available budget, the available cash for that except?
Yeah, so this, yeah, all this is paying the bill. Where the money comes from is what, what we'll have to work with the clerk's office. Mike?
So in this, in a way, it's going to kneecap Jeff Lindsay.
Mike?
Yeah.
Got to identify, so for the record, first day?
Yeah, Mike Rosedale, Bonner County Clerk. This is no way it's going to kneecap Jeff Lindsay and EMS. Their bills are going to be paid, they have contracts out there, uh, the ambulance they are, are going to be received, all that. This is a matter of which ones we use first, but those contracts are going to be paid for.
Thanks.
Perfect.
Can you let us know at the beginning of next week's meeting what the result of your meeting with the clerk is today?
We'll have Mike give you an update.
Yeah, Michael, we'll have Mike stand up and-
Or Nancy, somebody that really knows. Sorry, Mike.
Okay, moving along, Personnel Management, Bob.
Morning Commissioners, Bob Bauer for the record. So the attached contract is between Bonner County and 7B Forestry Mulching to provide project work for the treatment and/or removal of hazardous wildland fuels at locations in compliance with the specifications for the bonfire program. There will be no county match at the, as this contract will be funded by Idaho Department of Land's grant.
Okay, next, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve and sign the contract for hazardous fuel treatment between Bonner County and 7B Forestry Mulching for the project work on bonfire program funded by an Idaho Department of Land's grant and no county match.
Okay, and I'll step down from the chair in a second. Um, question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks, Bob, moving along to recreation. Pete?
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Pete.
Morning, everybody. One item for consideration this morning is the annual cost share operating plan agreement um, between Bonner County, the Forest Service, and State of Idaho, attaches the annual operating plan for the Bonner County Groomers Association. This includes annual updates to the financial plan and operating plan. The modifications, how the USDA Forest Service updates they bring each year. Uh, in the cost share agreement, there was one small change in contributions that changed by 1% from the fiscal year 21. Uh, this is due to an increase in the county operator wages from $17 an hour to $18.02 an hour. This has been viewed by people.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the Bonner County Groomers Association FY 2022 op, annual operating agreement between the Bonner County, State of Idaho, and the US Forest Service.
Yeah, I'll step down from the chair, I was waiting for a second from Steve, he's not here. I'll step down from the chair in a second, uh, question or comment?
Not ARPA money. Just to get that out there.
Go ahead, Doug.
Doug Patterson for the record, so, um, how much is the dollars that we would receive from the US government for, and, and what is the county's pay? USDA, US Department of Agriculture?
Oh, I get what that means, but we're not receiving anything. This is an agreement that shows what we provide and, and, um-
Yeah, that, um, so the cost share, the total contributions are approximately from Bonner County, 31,370, 31,370, Forest Service contributes 3,600.
Oh, my bad. I thought it was all based on, um, I'm wrong. That happens.
It's like I say, change a tad bit because we up the wages.
Thank you.
So I'll quit saying that this is based on fees only, I guess there is some contribution by the US here.
Um, just to clarify, uh, Kendra Martin for the record. I'm getting used to it, okay, um, just to clarify, so, uh, is this, you said there is an update to the contract?
Yeah, the, the 1% um, in the contributions, we, we, it changed by 1% as far as how much Bonner County contributes because we up the wages to be competitive as far as hiring goes.
And that's the only update, only change?
Monetarily speaking, yes.
Was there other changes?
Um, no, the rest of it is a mapping system that the Forest Service and the state agrees on because we, we operate our groomer on their property and it's all, it's all laid out. So when it comes down to it, um, everybody knows where they're going and where they're not going.
Okay, well, just-
yearly agreement.
Yeah, I just, yeah, it's not running curves, excuse me. So, um, so you mentioned their property, so this is owned by the?
Um, there's, there's, there's a bunch of different-
Was it this property?
No, it's, it's Forest Service property, State of Idaho, um, managed by the Department of Lands. There's some lumber company property that, um, it's all kind of checkerboarded throughout in the mountains.
Right.
Roads pass through a number of different properties.
But this just deals with the land owned by the Forest Service.
Okay.
The Forest Service manages.
Okay, thank you.
We have agreements with all.
Yeah. Any other question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thanks, Pete. Oh, did you? No, thanks, Pete, I missed it as well. Too late now. Now we got to redo the whole thing. Okay, so next one will be airport, Dave, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
We can for a change.
Knockingly enough.
Oh, come on, you guys, this has been more, happening more often than not, so let's just calm down a little bit.
Calm down.
Thank you, thank you for hearing me, uh, I have one item for you. This is the lease amendment to Lot 34 at Sandpoint Airport. The lesssee of Lot 34 at Sandpoint Airport is financing the proposed improvements and the lender is asking for consent and agreement from the county and that the lender may propose a subsequent tenant in the event of default by the current lesssee. This is allowed in Article 10, Section 10.2 of this lease, and I recommend entering into this agreement.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to enter into this lease amendment